Good evening, Mr. Brecher.
Here.
Ms. Arico?
Here.
Mrs. Ward?
Here.
Ms. Maroney?
Here.
Mr. Brecher?
Here.
Ms. Patel?
Here.
Mrs. Conway?
Here.
Dr. Chen?
Here.
All present with Mrs. Peng.
Opening statement. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the Edison Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof posted in the Board of Education and Administrative Offices. Copies of the notices were sent to the Home News Tribune and Star Ledger on January 11th, 2019. The public may participate at regular meetings in accordance with the bylaws and the applicable state regulations. So, on today's agenda, we're gonna have a closed session. So, Dan?
Whereas Section 8 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 Public Schools of much as 75, permits the exclusion of the public from agreeing meeting in certain circumstances, and whereas this public body is of the opinion that such circumstances present exist, now therefore be resolved by the Board of Education of the Township of Edison as follows: One, the public shall be excluded from discussion of and action upon the herein specified subject matters. Two, the general nature of the subject matter to be discussed as follows: Attorney-client privileged discussion regarding revised election procedures, which may or may not take place today, and personnel appointments and changes of status. Three, as it is anticipated at this time that the above stated subject matters shall be made public, as such time as the need for non-disclosure no longer exists, and four, this resolution shall take effect immediately.
Can I have a motion? Ms. Maroney, second. Okay, Mrs. Ward.
Dr. Chen?
Yes.
Mrs. Conway?
Yes.
Mrs. Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Brecher?
Yes.
Ms. Maroney?
Yes.
Mrs. Ward?
Yes.
Ms. Arico?
Yes.
Mr. Sheik?
Yes.
All yes.
So, it's gonna be a short closed session, probably fifteen, twenty minutes. Thank you. All right. Can I have a motion to reconvene? All right. Mr. Brecher, Mrs. Ward.
Dr. Chen?
Yes.
Mrs. Conway?
Yes.
Mrs. Patel?
Please.
Okay. Mr. Brecher?
Yes.
Ms. Maroney?
Here.
Mrs. Ward?
Here.
Mr. Arico?
Yes.
Mr. Sheik?
Yes.
Okay, we're back in open session.
Okay, so we're back to the open session, and as you guys can see, our Superintendent, Mr. Saxton, is not here today. He's a little bit under the weather, so we hope he, you know, have a speedy recovery and come back, you know, very soon. So, with that said, we're open for public comments, resolutions only. We only have one item, which you all have, so if anyone has any questions, the podium's yours. See none? So, let's, can I have a motion on the approval of the personnel report? Okay, Ms. Maroney, Mr. Arico.
Yeah, you can comment on it, yeah.
Well, I'd like to first say that I'm glad to see we're moving forward with our Director of Security, and hopefully we'll have a solid plan for all our schools to keep them as safe as possible. Also, I'd like to speak about Shannon becoming the middle school supervisor of Social Studies. I, Shannon, please stand up, get your picture.
(laughter)
I taught alongside Shannon when I was a teacher at Herbert Hoover Middle School, oh, fifteen years ago or so, and I know what Shannon's like, and I was shocked to see this on the agenda tonight, because I didn't know anything about it until we seen the agenda. And so, I'm very happy for you, and congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Any other comments before we go on? All right. Dan?
Okay, this is, Dr. Chen?
Yes.
Mrs. Conway?
Yes.
Mrs. Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Brecher?
Yes.
Ms. Maroney?
Yes.
Mrs. Ward?
Yes.
Ms. Arico?
Yes.
Mr. Sheik?
Yes.
So, carry.
All right, so move on. I think most of people here is for the next topic, is the election thing. So, you know, earlier this week, it came to the attention of the board that the town council was convening a special meeting to discuss the movement of this year's Board of Education election to April. We convened this special meeting so we, as a board, can have opportunity to weigh in. Earlier this evening, I was informed by our BA, Mr. Michelle, that Council President Gomez canceled the town council special meeting tomorrow. Okay? The board members, we have a township liaison committee, four board members went to meet with the town council counterparts yesterday. It's myself, Ms. Maroney, Mr. Brecher, and Mrs. Ward. And on the town council side was the Councilman Bob Deal, Council Vice President A.J. Partiel, and Lenny Sandowski. We shared our thoughts with them, and, you know, we had a very productive meeting. So, there are a lot of, a number of opinions, some in favor and some opposed, to move the board election to April. Those in favor has expressed the benefits of the move; the opposed have highlighted the challenges. Tonight, board members and the public have the opportunity to weigh in on this important subject. Even though the council has canceled the meeting, we can still have the discussion. That's why we have the meeting here. Regardless where we end up, I'd like to see greater participation by our residents. This past election, we saw tens of thousands of voters cast for board education candidates. This is very high for a board, you know, election. We should continue to encourage the level of participation and try to exceed those numbers. When residents participate in the process, the process becomes stronger. With that, I open the floor to the board members for comments. Anyone wants to comment on this particular topic? Yes, Mr. Brecher?
Well, I had a whole thing here that I brought up, but I don't think I need to go there. But what I did want to talk about was, I heard the council meeting when they originally brought this up, and there were residents there, and they explained some concerns that they had, and I heard a couple things that were echoed, that I've heard from a couple people, and I wanted to clarify that. And since, I guess, we're the Board of Education, our job is to educate, and if we don't get that message out to the public, it's not their fault that they don't understand it, it's ours that we didn't get that message to them. They believe that we had a bloated pot of money, I think, is the way that they presented it. What they don't understand is that Edison Township is in the lowest ten percent of cost that we spend to educate children. Out of five hundred and something districts, we're in the lowest ten percent. I mean, you can't get better than Edison, because we provide one of the top-quality educations, you look at that by our test scores, and then with the frugal amount of money that we spend, I can't say that we overspend on anything. In fact, if anything, it looks more like we don't spend enough. So, I mean, the facts are there. Maybe they don't look at them, maybe they don't look for them, maybe they just read what they read in a blog. I'm not really quite sure what the reasoning is, but if we're in that lowest ten percent to educate a child in the entire state of New Jersey, I think we do a very good job at that. The other thing, when you look at it too, is you'll hear things that we have a staffing shell game, and I've heard that numerous times again. But what those people don't realize is, we put together a budget in April, our budget starts in July, and then we have this enrollment that happens over the summer. And one year, I think, we had almost five hundred students enroll.
Two years in a row.
So, when you have five hundred students, you need educators to teach these students. So, it's not that we're saying we're gonna, we have a hundred staff members one year, and then the next year we snuck in twenty. Our enrollment increased to that point. Now, I can't explain where the enrollment comes from. That would be a question left to the planning board, zoning board, or town council. That's not really, you know, up to us. Our job is just to educate the students that come into our school system. And I think we need to get that word out to everybody of the efficiency that we have. I think Paul printed out an efficiency standard that we had. When we reviewed that, we are like highly efficient in just about every category. I mean, it's amazing, you know, what we do with the small dollars that we actually have. So, we do need to get it out. When you hear these people and the people from the public, you can quote these things. I mean, if you need to know where our ranking is, send me an email, I'll get you that ranking number. I think we're forty-fourth or something out of five hundred.
Twenty-third of the Edison School District, in the whole state of New Jersey.
That's where all districts above, I think, thirty-five-hundred or better. I mean, it's really a remarkable thing that our staff here does, so I'm very proud of everything that everybody does for us here, the staff and everybody. I mean, you're what makes this district so great, and I'd like to thank everybody that came out in support of this, you know, speaking to your council members, trying to educate them, and I think it really is moving in a positive direction.
Okay. Any other board members? Yes, Mrs. Conway?
When this came to the highlight, I was actually torn. I didn't know which way to go, whether it be April or November, because you start thinking, in April, we can focus specifically on the Board of Ed, and we can educate the public regarding all the things involved with the Board of Ed. When they moved it to November, I thought it was a good idea, because we're saving some money, but at the same time, we're moving ahead. But I did question it, because politics gets involved, and the Board of Ed kind of gets lost in the election, whether it be this year or three years ago, because at one point, people actually thought, they didn't even see where the Board of Ed election was on the ballots that were sent home. So, it's a shame that we're not reaching out to as many people as we can, but at the same time, and I kept going back and forth, and I believe many people in the town feel the same way, they're not sure which is actually the best. But when it comes down to dollars and cents, we are still better off staying in November, and I'm glad that this decision is being kept.
Okay? Yes, Ms. Maroney?
I think an important thing that came out of last night's meeting was the spirit of cooperation between the town council members and the Board of Ed members, and moving forward, since we all know that we're going to be, hopefully, looking forward to a referendum to help our overcrowding issue, we really need to work very closely with the town council in order to make it happen, and we all agree, those of us who were there, that we would continue in the spirit of cooperation moving forward. So, it was really a very important and productive meeting.
Thank you. Any other board members? Yes, Mrs. Ward?
I do want to thank the councilmen last night. They were truly interested in hearing us and hearing what we had to say, and I want to thank the councilmen very much for their cooperation with us. We have too much on our plate right now to worry about getting budgets passed, and new election people elected. And also, you know, in reading the law, the law is not clear as to when we start. One paragraph says that we, the new election starts April, is April 1st, and the next paragraph says it's the third week. So, the law is ambiguous, so we have to straighten out all that before we do anything. I thought it was a good idea four years ago, I think it's a good idea now. Let's leave it where it is and see, and let it work itself out. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other board members? Any other comments? Okay, see none. I just want to add that in the 2019, will be a very busy year, and Mrs. Maroney and Mrs. Ward also touched on these two important tasks that we're moving forward. One is the superintendent search, and the other thing is that we've been working very hard with Mr. Saxton to see if we can get a boundary referendum passed, so we can finally address the overcrowding issue and reestablish the full-day kindergarten. So, those are the two biggest ticket items that we want to accomplish, and also there are other small things we want to do as well. So, you know, I have something that I have for different committees. For the Technology and Curriculum Committee, I have forwarded the online registration and annual re-registration of the students to our administration. Let them take a look into it to see whether we can start implementing this. We have heard a lot of, out of district kids attending our schools, and I'm thinking that some other district are doing this already. We should look into it to help us, our district. And the other thing is, due to the demand of the community and the demographic shift, I would like our curriculum committee to look into introducing Cricket into our phys-ed program. Last year, Edison's ranking dropped a little bit. I hope this year, the, you know, with the new board, we can work together with the administration to bring our rating up again. The other thing that we heard, a lot of complaints from the parents, the Board of Ed and the district, we have different departments, there are a lot of issues, when they have issues, they don't know where to go. They call people and, you know, not getting answers. So, I would suggest we look into implementing a student-parent request system, similar to the system that the township's been implementing, they call citizen requests. So, you can request whatever the issue is and fire it online, so we can track this. We can route to the right department, and we can track these issues, so you can find out, you know, the turnaround and the stuff. And also, which is the other important thing, is that brought up by one of the board member, Mrs. Patel, is very important to her, and I agree with that, is to look into working closely with Middlesex Community College, to get more of our classes being accepted by the MCC, because we know the college is very expensive, hoping that the students who graduate from Edison Public Schools will have, will qualify to receive the associate degrees, or at least very close to receive those degrees. All they need to do, maybe take a couple more courses, they can go there. For the Food Committee, we used to have an advisory board, and they only meet once a year, and this year, we have a new food committee. We heard a lot of complaints from students, parents, and staff on the quality, quantity, and freshness of our food. We pay our food vendor a lot of money, we hope our food committee can look into it, and are making, definitely making some improvements, it's been going on for a while. And Finance Facility Committee, so as you also heard, that we are in the process of building modular classrooms for FDR. We need to continue to make sure that they're gonna be on the plan. The plan is to get these modular classrooms built before the new school starts, so the new kids, the kids can move into the classroom to reduce the change. And we also have a lot of issues with our roofing in our district, the roofs. Some of you work in those buildings. We have worked, was working with vendors to see the possibility of placing solar panels on our roof to reduce the cost, and also have the vendor share the cost of fixing the roofs during the process. We'll continue to looking for savings, we have done that last year, but we'll continue to do that, without impact to the services, to our students, staff, and our district, not taking any money away from our classrooms. The other thing is the long-range facility plan, which we have been lacking in the past several years. I'm looking forward to the plan, so we can finally have a plan to address the outdated, heavily overcrowded facilities. And the other thing is working with our newly-appointed security director to make our school safer by assessing, you know, the current protocols and procedures we have to build, you know, vestibles or other security measures to make our school safer. Transportation Committee, it's always the issue for the parents. We are in the process of implementing the busing software, hopefully we'll have more efficient routes, and hope by the new school year, the software will be implemented. We are also looking to hire more of our own drivers and buses, to reduce the cost of the busing, and also less dependent on vendors, because we had a lot of issues this year, at the very beginning of the year, with the vendors, right? The other thing is looking to linking the bus routing software to our registration system, to help parents with their busing subscription, and the minimum, you know, print out the bus passes. The kids lose the bus passes, and it's a hassle. We have the systems, it's in place, right? The other thing we talked before, when we talked about securities, is tracking devices for the buses and the security measure to allow parents to know where their kids are. So, we'll continue to look into that. We have not actually started yet. I hope with the new security director, those are things that we'll be looking into. And Policy Committee, we have some other policy that's outdated, we need to update those policies. We have, you know, the new policy committee chair is a lawyer, so we'll, you know, make some, you know, improvements on that. Special Ed Committee, you know, we have Liz and Mrs. Maroney on the committee. We had a lot of, before, there was also advisory capacity, not a lot of activities. We had a lot of issues with these special needs students, a lot of complaints. So, we'll ensure that our kids were getting the best service the district can provide, and find out if there are any gaps or anything that we can fix to improve the service to the special needs population. And the other thing is Community Relations Committee. We had a committee last year, but for different reasons, that the, never, we didn't have a chance to have any meetings. I hope this year, since we are also working on the boundary referendums, we need to bring the board to the community. We need this committee to work with, you know, the community, to listen to the voice and the needs from the community, to bring back to the board, so we can fix those. So, I can list other stuff, the list can go on and on, but as you can see, we have a lot of things that we need to tackle, and we need some stability this year to try to accomplish some of these tasks, that'll be helping to the district, to the students, and to the taxpayers. So, that's, you know, what I have. Any other comments from the public, from the board? Yes?
Two things that I would like to talk about tonight.
One is that last week, we did training at James Monroe for the Wingman Program. I am grateful to Claudine Sourd and Amy Fuentes, who are the two Wingman champion teachers at Monroe, and also to Principal Cynthia Tufaro for their support. And what was absolutely adorable was last Friday, we did the training with the children, the fifth graders, on Monday. On Friday, they turnkeyed to the first graders, and this was the first time that I'd actually had an opportunity to go in and see the fifth graders teaching the first graders. And they were concentrating on the word perseverance, and teaching the first graders the significance, and how one helps somebody. They watched a little video on a child who had lost his leg at an early stage of his life, and how this child persevered and became a great athlete in his school as he grew up, and he talked about the challenges that he had in being accepted by other kids. So, once again, as I've spoken about before, the Wingman Program is about teaching commonality and not separating each other by differences, and it was just so exciting to see the fifth graders actually teaching the first graders, and see all of our dreams coming to fruition. Also, I wanted to report to you that I met today again with a young lady at J.P. Stevens, Maher Batia. She addressed the Board of Education, I guess it was in November, about her desire to see us go to biodegradable lunch trays and so forth, which district-wide started on January 2nd. All of the children in the district are now using biodegradable trays for their lunches, and Maher has assured me that these are compostable and will deteriorate in the environment and ultimately become soil. But that is not enough for Maher. So, now, we are working on a plan whereby the children will begin separating their garbage into plastics, and cans, and food, and liquid. And so, we are working on a plan to make that happen. This young lady is the key in perseverance, this young lady. She will not stop, and, but the important message to every child, every student in the district is, one person does make a difference. So, coming up to Martin Luther King Day next Monday, that is something to be remembered. One person can make a huge difference. So, thank you to Maher and to all the other people whom I mentioned.
Thank you. Yes.
I just have one quick thing. I know, I think we received an email from Ms. Patel about looking into a holiday, and I can't remember the holiday or the date.
Yeah.
And I'm not sure if you're looking at this year or for next year.
Twenty nineteen, yeah. So, I have reached out to the community, and I gave the feedback to Patty. Patty's looking into the calendar.
Okay. So, Mr. Saxton's gonna take a look at it?
Yes, yes.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Yep. The other thing I touched base on is that the superintendent search. We talked in December that, you know, we're gonna hire a search firm to help us with the superintendent search. So, today, I'm asking, you know, our attorney to work with Dan to send out the request for proposal for the search firms, so we can start the process very soon. Okay? So, with that said, we'll open up for public comments. Yes?
Carol Bedowsky, 39, Jonathan Drive. It's a little anticlimactic with tomorrow's meeting canceled, but the issue hasn't completely gone away. After the American Revolution, Thomas Jefferson argued that the newly-independent nation needed an educational system, and he suggested that tax dollars be used to fund it. His pleas were ignored, however, and the idea of a public school system languished for nearly a century. Eventually, though, the idea took hold, and today, the idea of a free and appropriate public education is one of the foundations upon which our democracy rests. In general, in the United States, voters elect representatives to run the country, the state, the municipality, or the school district. They do not vote on regular expenditures, except in cases where larger sums are required for special projects, such as referenda. Healthy democracy demands citizen input, AKA voter turnout. When I first moved to Edison, we had an appointed Board of Education, and school budgets were approved by a Board of School Estimates, a mix of council members and appointed Board of Ed members, if I recall correctly. Soon after, we changed to an elected Board of Education. Board of Ed elections were held in the spring. The first year, we had thirty-some candidates running for election, and once they decided on the nine candidates to elect that first year out of the large pool, many people forgot to vote on the school budget at all. The council members took pity on the schools, after clearly seeing the voting pattern, a very small number of voters, the majority of whom only voted for candidates, and ignored the budget question completely. They made no cuts to the budget that year because of the unique situation, and warned us that that was probably the last time they would do that. At least one-third of the New Jersey school districts hold their elections on days and times of the year, typically in the spring, when no other elections occur. This, that means two-thirds hold it in the fall. This practice tends to somewhat in- This practice tends to somewhat in isolate, insulate the school elections from party politics, and also contributes to low voter turnout. The low voter turnout at spring Board of Ed elections permits special interest groups to exert more power in school elections. Fall elections dilute the impact of special interest groups in school elections. That is one important reason many people prefer to hold school board elections in the fall as part of the general election, to have more voters across a greater, uh, cross-section of the population. However, um, so the main point in having an elected Board of Education is to have voter input in selecting the people that run the school system. Most people agree on that part. If you are supervising a government entity, you should have voter support. The more voter input and support, the better. Based on that logic, voter turnout really matters. So keeping the fall election makes sense if you want more local citizens to have a say in who the Board of Ed members are. I strongly urge Edison voters and potential voters to come out and vote in the Board of Education elections every year, no matter when they are held. Remember, vote by mail is always an option. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments for the public? It's an important issue. There you go. And we're not timing this, okay?
So I can go on?
No, well, that's not timing. It's an important issue, we let, we let the public speak.
Oh, they're, they're timing us, okay.
We let the public speak. It's an important issue.
Matt Revneck, ETA Vice President, Worth Road. Just to jump on some of the comments that were made already. And I've spoken about this for a number of years in the past. Edison is the fifth largest school district in New Jersey. We have a very diverse population. We have a growing school system. And, you know, more and more people just keep coming into our schools. But yet, on the other hand, our per pupil expenditure is very low compared to most, way below the state average. So with the money that is there, we do a, an excellent job. As Mr. Shi mentioned before, and Mr. Brescher, you know, we're still in the top fifty without a doubt.
Twenty-three.
Twenty-three, in terms of our achievements. So it shows that, you know, you're getting the bang for your buck if you're coming to the Edison School System. You know, it's disturbing also the fact that even the consideration of what the Bo- uh, Town Council was trying to do. They've proclaimed that Edison School System is one of the gems of this community. And to play the politics and to move the election at this point would have a negative effect on the school system. You have s- board members here that were elected that would have their terms cut short, for example. You'd ask people to run that weren't even considering running in April. You know, that will may, may have been thinking about November, but that automatically speeds up their agenda. As was mentioned, you have people that got voted on this time with over ten thousand votes. In fact, the lowest vote getter this time would have won most elections in the past. So the democratic process has worked by having it in November. It wasn't even a presidential election. Yes, it was a governor election, but it wasn't the presidential election, which more and more voters turn out for. So, again, to make that change, to incorporate a, you know, fee of having to run the election in April, you know, would have, to me, a big, it would be a big mistake. The only one that would really be hurt by this is the students of our district and the system itself. You know, it's very disturbing to hear too about the, you know, slush funders, or calling it whatever you wanna call it. As a negotiator for our union, we scrutinize the budget, we scrutinize the audit, we look for money too when we're negotiating. We know it's not there, quite honestly. We've done some changes to our structure on what we've worked with to try to work with the board, knowing that it's, it's limited funds. You know, we can't find the money that used to be there, quite honestly. You know, you have one of the best administrators in the state, if not the best, in Mr. Mashad. No one ever questions his integrity, especially us. You know, we know he's not hiding money in places, and there's, there's not that much to be, to be had.
He's sure?
You know, a- in addition to that, which was mentioned, I mean, again, we're getting, I remember, what, two years in a row, we had five, six hundred additional students that weren't budgeted for. You know, i- it's just something that, y- you can't even plan for these things. And to be hit, and, you know, I don't care what anyone says. If a budget goes down, they're gonna make cuts. They can tell you no, but they're gonna make cuts. We had a hatchet taken back in two thousand and ten to the budget after the state cut us big time. Believe it was six and a half million dollars, if I'm not mistaken, Mr. Mashad. After the, after the, after the state took ten million away. You know, we had staff members that were let go. We had, you know, negative things happen, programs were cut. You know, it was at that time that the kindergarten program was cut. All right? After-school activities were cut. So anything that's done like that will have a negative effect on the education of our youth. And the one thing that the people of this town deserve, the taxpayers deserve, and that's a quality education for their children. They're currently getting it, and any changes will have a negative impact. Thank you.
Thank you. Other public comments? Yes.
Hi, Maria Orchid, eighty-three, Jefferson. I wanted to say on, um, Thursday, we're going to have the Junior College Night at Edison High. And for one of your points, uh, Middlesex Community College will be there. So I'm anxious to see what type of award-winning or, uh, credit programs that they have for our next graduating class. And everybody is welcome to come Thursday night at Edison High. Thank you.
Thank you. Time?
I believe it's seven o'clock, but I have to check and get back to you on that.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Sinon, can I have a motion for adjournment of the meeting? Mrs. Ward? Mr. Brescher? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.